A call to order the City Council work session of Thursday, April 11, 2013. We have a quorum for a work session, so let's get going. Wyatt? Wyatt? See? Move fast here.
Counsel, what we'd like to do for the agenda tonight is start off with a discussion, a follow-up discussion from last week on the capital improvements program specifically on the City Hall and public safety renovation and expansion. And then present the Police Department budget. And then from there, shift to the third quarter financial report. And at that point, we anticipate it'll be about 8:30, and then we'll be able to shift for the rest of the evening to the preliminary markup discussion. With respect to the capital improvements program, Counsel got a briefing on the CIP, all of the facilities at your last work session. And in terms of the City Hall public safety renovation, we'd like to take the opportunity to summarize, but also answer any additional questions that are about that project. I think what the, to distill the staff request down to its essence would be, the Counsel has already approved funding for the first phase of the project, as well as the initial million dollars for the top priority safety improvements. And we would ask in the CIP that we, A, have Counsel's blessing to move ahead with architectural work, and to do the scoping for that architectural work in consultation with the City Council, so that we can scope it correctly, but also inform the discussion more ably in terms of what the options are for City Hall expansion, what the aesthetics are associated with them, how they would really function for us to serve our needs in the most cost-effective way and in the most effective way. A couple of key points on it. We have put together all of the presentations to date using pro bono architectural work and our in-house graphics staff and Development Services. And I think a lot of staff expertise has gone into it. But I think the Counsel would benefit, I think everybody would benefit, from bringing in some architectural assistance, so we can really flesh these ideas out in a way that is, provides us with more options. And so that really is, I think, in a nutshell what the request is, is to be able to proceed with that and then come back to Counsel with more information about sort of the big questions that the Counsel has about underground parking and that type of thing. I will note that in terms of timing, we have been working on the courtroom security pieces of this for five years. And the judges have been patient with us, but I think they do expect to see some forward motion to at least elaborate on these ideas and really frame them up, so that we can make a clear decision in terms of what the scope of work would be for City Hall improvement. So that in a nutshell is the request on that. We'd be happy to provide more information and go back through the timeline that Cindy passed out last week. But let me pause here and ask for Counsel questions on that project.
Thanks. Any questions, comments? Yes, Counsel Member Berry.
You know, I am surprised that we're still having this conversation, because I thought this was fairly well knocked out last time around. But I, as you were speaking, I recall that safety, the whole safety issue was extremely important in the consideration of the City Hall renovations. And I think every Counsel member feels very strongly that we want to make sure that our judges and our police are safe, and citizens coming to and from the courtroom are safe. And also, the other piece that was, that I recall had generated a great deal of concern with the residents was the renovation of City Hall Hall and how it affected water runoff, you knew I was going to say that, stormwater, et cetera. And I don't need an answer, but I just, you know, want to once again raise the issue that there is an expectation from your neighbors that all these issues are going to be considered as you move forward. That's all I wanted to say.
Questions, comments? Counsel Member Kaylin?
Well, I'm not sure, you know, the timing of the various pieces, some was already approved. And what has not been yet approved is the parking portion?
Yeah, the front part actually was approved in FY13 budget. So it's the rear piece.
The rear parking.
Well, the rear addition is in this piece, as well as the HVAC work. Those are the two sort of big dollar amounts that are in FY14 budget. And so what the staff request would be is to allow that funding to be in the CIP and to adopt it as proposed, with the knowledge that we're going to get more information when we, with architectural.
As a placeholder, so that you have something to work with, once the data comes in.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions and comments? Anybody disagree with going forward as the City Manager recommends? Yes, Counsel Member.
Thank you. So can somebody give me, wow, that's loud. Can somebody tell us how much actual money is going out the door in this fiscal year for the work that is contemplated? I'm sorry, this is one of several things that I feel like I came in, you know, the middle of the movie on, and I just, by the end of this coming, by the end of this fiscal year, this coming fiscal year, what will we see have happened here in our City Hall? You don't have to answer that if you don't want.
Let me give a crack at it, and then tell me if I've got it wrong. I was going to say the million that was done for the top priority safety needs, that will be accomplished, that work is underway. And then the $300,000 for architecture. And anything else?
That would be it until we're back, because the HVAC won't proceed until we're back with the big picture and the contract. But the next critical renovation piece, in addition to the million, is the HVAC and window replacement in this building.
So during FY13, 14, we're going to spend a million bucks to get it up to speed on safety. And we're going to spend $300,000 to get the opportunity to see a professional architect tell us what we might do next. Is that basically what we would hope to accomplish by June 30 of 2014?
That's right.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel Member Tartar.
So the $300,000, does that get you to building permits, or is that just conceptual? What is that?
We originally cast out as A and E. What we want to do probably is not get all the way to engineering, at least, you know, the initial ask is to do architectural at the conceptual level, so we can really evaluate the options.
Is that going to be $300,000 for getting, for conceptual?
To be clear, what that's getting you is looking at the structure front parking, the central front entrance, and the rear. So it's three projects rolled into one conceptual planning. There is already approved, then, if Counsel authorized proceeding, the rest of the A and E building permits, construction bid docs.
Really, let me ask it anyway. Have we approved all this, or that's what we're talking about right now? In other words, isn't that kind of the mix?
That has been approved in the past, but in the last CIP adoption, there was a request for some steps to happen before that, the $300,000 in particular was authorized for expenditure.
Last meeting, we were talking about parking in the front, parking in the rear. It seemed like to me it was an open issue 10 days ago, whenever we last addressed this, but maybe I'm mistaken, I don't know.
I think what this does is it gives us the ability to really stare at that up close and then make a final decision on that. But it's going to give us a couple well-defined options. And also an opportunity for more community discussion, because it is going to be quite a tear-up in a key part of the city. So no surprises here. I think that's what we're trying to achieve, even as we move forward.
That's right.
And in the document I gave you last time, and I have extra copies if you need it tonight, but we did provide a Gantt chart, which was one of the other asks that was pending from the January 17 joint facility work session. So you'll clearly see in that document identification where we stopped for public input and Counsel touch point.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Then I think you have the go-ahead. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Then we will shift then to the departmental budget for the Police Department. Chief Gavin?
Thank you. On behalf of the Police Department, the Fire Marshal's Office, thanks for allowing us to have this time to give you our proposed FY14 budget. We also have Tom Polara with us from the Fire Marshal Emergency Management Function to present with us tonight. I will present, we'll go through the budget book by page, we'll give you a budget page. And then at the end of the meeting, we will present to you the Gun Violence Prevention Plan and the annual report for 2012. So I'd like to direct you to page 37. It's just an overall summary of public safety. As you can see, in a snapshot, that public safety is married with a lot of interjurisdictional contracts, some of which you've already heard from fire and detention. Overall, public safety is looking at a 9.23% increase. Going into the main part of the budget, I will take you to page 99, where it starts. You have your organizational chart before you. And it goes into the first section of the budget, which is the Chiefs section of the budget. My office, for the most part, manages the public safety activities between all the public safety entities with Arlington County, maybe fire, volunteer fire. The Detention Center prepares the budgets, goes to the COG, Homeland Security issues, and prepares for all the Police Academy meetings regionally. In our budget for the Chiefs, you will see an increase in salaries and benefits. And you'll also see a small increase for the regional partnership we have with the Gang Task Force. Regionally, the Northern Virginia Chiefs have collectively come together to support this initiative, because regionally and financially, the federal government funds have, are gone for that. So each and every department throughout the region is putting together money to keep that going for the next year. The second part of this is, moving over to page 102, is photo enforcement program, which I'll hand it over to Captain Campbell here.
Photo enforcement program is going into its third year of full operation. The, there's going to be a slight change. We've changed the name from photo red light to photo enforcement. We are currently working with the, with the public schools, with the city schools, to implement a school bus stop arm program to help ensure safety for the children boarding buses. The same challenges exist for vehicles passing school buses as they do for enforcing red lights. There's a, it's very difficult to enforce, and there's state law now allows for enforcement use of photo equipment. So we're going to be helping them implement that and operate that system as well.
Are there any questions? Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
This is just broadly? I mean, have we, have you presented the entire? Okay.
No. We're going to go through this page by page, just so you get a whole picture. We're going into Police Operations, which is your uniform patrol, your officers that you're going to see out on the street 24/7. This division is comprised of most of the officers you'll find in the apartment. One of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention, because I know it came across on a couple work sessions beforehand, is the number of arrests and tickets that have been enumerated for 2012. And because of the numbers have gone down, so have our revenue has gone down. I'd like to attribute that to, and there's some good things and some negative things about our numbers. We've had two officers in the past two years that have left to gone to other jurisdictions, ones that are significant riders, ticket riders. In this year alone, we've had seven officers that have been on light duty for more than a month period because of stress and injury-related. I would attribute that to the fact that we do have a basic minimum of staffing on the road. And for them to be hypervigilant and minimal staff for the period in which we have been, I think the injuries are stress-related and/or just outright injuries that come with being on duty. We've had three officers that were trained this year, one of which that did not make it through training. In that period in which you have three officers training, you also have three FTOs that are married with those officers, which means less officers out on the street actually doing the proactive enforcement, because they're in a training mode, they're actually learning slowly. In addition to that, in terms of traffic itself, what you will find in the streets of Falls Church, as you know it, there's a lot more construction projects that slows traffic, which is good and bad. But I have to point out some kudos to Public Works and Engineering, as they have installed those radar speed signs that have been very effective. And undoubtedly, you will ask these officers out there, but those signs do work for Broad West, Little Falls, and Lincoln. And then additionally, and this has been a challenging year in 2012, is that you have your Hillwood Avenue incident, you have your June DeRachio, you have your superstorm Sandy, all things that took all our efforts away about enforcement, and we're focused mostly on public safety at that time. So when you look at numbers in terms of revenue, you will see a decrease. And I would say, I would say there's some of our challenges there. So we are not going to touch on the unmet needs at this point, we're going to move through operations. And I'm going to hand it back over to Captain Campbell, as we will touch on Services Division portion.
The Services Division of the Police Department is comprised of the Criminal Investigations Unit, School Resource Officers, Community Services Officers, records, and those types of functions. As far as our budgets going this year, we're pretty much remaining fairly constant with last year. The one increase that you will see is, has to do with the radio system, and it's a contractual obligation with Arlington County for the costs and fees associated with maintaining and operating their radio system, and the billing that's going to be happening with that, as we're charged moving forward. The next section we'd like to discuss is our Police Dispatch Communications Unit. Primarily, the changes that are going to be taking place there is our dispatch supervisor, who's been with us for 20, about almost 25 years, is going to be retiring as of July 1st. We have hired two dispatchers to replace him. Dispatch has been operating on absolute minimum personnel for the last three, four years, where we have one dispatcher per squad, and then the supervisor, who's been covering any shortages. And it's very difficult to keep up with those shortages when you consider leave, training, and those sort of needs that go on. Also, when we have issues such as Hillwood, DeRachio, where we need to have more than one person at a time in that booth, it's very difficult to staff. And bringing two on at an entry-level salary, it's only going to cost a very minimal amount of additional money to add additional staffing, and that should help reduce any overtime costs that would be associated. So hopefully, it would balance everything out. The other increases in the budget is significant, is due to professional contractual obligations, again, with Arlington County and our 911 system and the contract that I believe has already been discussed. The next section is animal control. And with animal control, there's actually absolutely no change in our funding request for animal control from last year.
We're going to move into the Fire Marshal Emergency Management portion, unless you have any questions at this point. Okay.
How far, how far out are we going to get before we stop for questions? I'm going to lose my train of thought here if we don't.
Don't want that to happen, so maybe ask the question right now.
Okay. Thank you. Back to the photo enforcement program. On the revenue side of that, the fines, are the fines for the school bus portion of that program going to the schools or the city, or how's that handled?
The fines by statute would go to the school. Those would be, that would be after the costs that would be associated with operating the program. By code, it is a, it has to be operated by the schools. However, it's actually going to be operated by the police, because the Police Department is required for issuing the citations. The public perception is going to be that it is a police or a law enforcement program, as opposed to a school program, although the, as I say, the state code says that it must be the school that operates it. We will be, we currently are at the point right now where the RFP has been issued. We're waiting for replies from vendors, interested vendors, at this point. So we anticipate we'd be having the program up and running by September, by the beginning of the school year. Right now, it's, the way it works is the fine for a violation is $250. And that's established by code. And we're not completely sure, again, what the costs are going to be based on vendor operations, as we've not received the bids back on that. But the Police Department will be operating all backroom operations to that. Once an MOU is established to cover the cost of the Police Department, the remainder of the fines that are collected would end up going to the schools.
Okay. They don't, they don't show that in their budget this year, obviously, any anticipated revenue from this program, because for all the things he just said, right?
Sure. Yeah.
The other question had to do with dispatch function. I think the line on page 108, with planned increases in security measures for City Hall and City Schools, dispatch's responsibility to continue to broaden and expand. Just want to make clear that the million dollars that we just green-lighted to improve security at City Hall is consistent with what you're talking about, hiring two new people for dispatch. I mean, that's enough to handle whatever it is that you're going to do in City Hall to make it more secure.
With the fallout of the CIP, the domino effect of moving people around, we, our hopes are to move ECC into a place, other than the booth, into a position where it could be accompanied with an EOC. So yes, that would be, it would be more secure, we'd have a better view of the exterior of the building. The vision for public safety also is to be as independent as we can be. And if we respectfully build a communication center, we can possibly reduce some of our interjurisdictional contracts that are exploding. So if you look at our unmet needs, you'll see some priorities, maybe not top priorities, but priorities in the middle or down towards the end that will lend itself to making a more robust communication center, so that we can be a little more independent and/or get out from under some of our IG contracts.
Okay. I think that would be good. On animal control service that we had occasion to use some years ago, Becky is now retired and part-time, right? So what happens if, you know, the raccoon comes into your porch when Becky is not working?
In the past, when Becky was full-time, her full-time hours were still only 40 hours. So anytime she was not here, officers responded to handle the majority of those calls. Upon Becky's retirement, the real benefit that I think Becky added to the city were her relationships with Arlington County, the animal shelter, her extensive knowledge and expertise in this area. And I think we were very, very fortunate to be able to retain her on a part-time basis. She handles all of the administrative matters that are required with the State Veterinaries' Office, the Health Department, things of that nature. And the officers, as they've handled a few more of the animal calls than they did in the past when Becky was here full-time. But it's running very smoothly currently, and I think we're certainly getting our value with Becky being here.
Okay. So it all, it all works out. The only other thought before I really do lose track of it is really for Wyatt. When you're talking about unmet needs, for instance, on page 103, the way the budget book is formatted, the unmet needs, it's not always crystal clear, unless you're reading really closely, that we're talking about things that, you know, we're not going to do these things. And I know one citizen sent us, you know, a pretty extensive message about the budget and didn't understand that some of the positions that she thought were being funded were, in fact, unmet needs, and we are not funding those. So just for future, you might have a big, bold-faced subhead that says, "Unmet needs are not funded," if that's what the purpose of that section is. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions at this point?
So I'm looking at page 102. Am I reading it correctly? It looks like this photo red light is actually costing us $50,000 a year, as opposed to bringing in revenue?
What we've done is, because of the work that's going to be necessary for the stop-arm enforcement, the sergeant that is currently the program manager for the photo red light, in writing up the RFP, getting ramped up for the stop-arm program, she's been devoting virtually 80% of her time, at the very least, to this project, trying to get everything working on that. We brought in our Community Services Officer, who is the backup for reviewing the violations on photo red light. So it was only appropriate to move his time into this budget area, because from here on out, we are going to need some additional officers doing reviews. When the violations are captured, we end up having to review them, they have to be approved by a sworn officer. And so there is an addition of .25 of an officer, .25 of a full-time employee that is devoted to this. Another thing that is not noted in here is the monies that would be compensating the Police Department for that time, that would be coming out of the fines as they come in. It's at this point in time, we're not sure what those revenues are going to be, but it will cover the costs associated with that additional officer.
But the fines come to the city, correct? They don't go straight to the Police Department, they come to our general fund, and then we allocate it.
We anticipate that this program will pay for itself, and more, and then some. What I think in putting the budget together, we know from experience that this program might take more than a year to administer. Our goal is to have it up and running for the start of school in September. Photo Red took us two years to go through DMV and the State Police and everybody else who had to touch it. And so on the side of being cautious, we did not budget the revenues. It's about a $20,000 delta in terms of the way we're showing it here as a cost. And so I've asked Richard to sort of keep that $20,000 in our final checklist as a possible area that we can add into, add into the budget, because we really shouldn't show it as a loss.
But I mean, you're showing, you're showing right now $170,000 in materials and supplies for, unless I'm misreading this chart, I'm on page 102.
I believe it's a $20,000 net, but.
I mean, this shows, it looks like $50,000 loss in 14. I mean, I kind of think we ought to be able to figure out how to run this thing and make some money, or certainly not lose that kind of money on this program.
We agree. So it's a $50,000 item that I think, in terms of final budget trimming, this would be one to have in mind.
But I mean, it seems like it would not be anywhere near that much money. You're talking about, even if you took $50,000 off, it looks like it costs $200,000 to administer this program. You see right there, 204? That seems just like a heck of a lot of money.
Well, 170 of that is the contractor that we currently have for Photo Red. So that's a given.
Do we pay a flat fee, or do they get a percentage?
Per intersection, or per access.
That is a flat fee. It is a flat fee for the Photo Red. By statute, it must be a flat fee. The stop-arm program, on the other hand, however, is not. That's a percentage. The vendor would be taking a percentage of the fine, and the remainder of the money would be coming into the city. Once it's in the city, after costs are covered, the MOU is covered between the city government and the schools, the remainder could then be transferred from general fund to the schools.
So for this 170 that we pay this vendor, do they maintain the equipment, or what they do? Is that the light that keeps flashing all the time that people are complaining about?
Yes, or the equipment, that does not belong to us. That is leased equipment, they maintain it 100%.
But I mean, do they, it doesn't sound like they do maintain it, because I've seen it flashing all over the place. Aren't the neighbors upset about that light kicking off? Am I thinking of the wrong thing? But I don't think I am.
I think the complaints have gone down. When it first started up, it was a new thing, it generated a lot of complaints, and we tried to work with the neighbors. And I think that has receded. But it's not just that intersection, it's the other, it's also at Cherry. And so that's what that fee is for. And so, that's, that's what that fee is for.
I guess. I would just say, look, to the extent we're doing this, we ought to be very careful, the vendors we choose, if they're taking that much of the percentage, and we're not maybe getting full maintenance of the facilities, or at least I understood there'd be some issues with those lights flashing off at inappropriate times. I know people have talked to me about it personally. So, I would just say, going forward with the school bus thing, we ought to, you know, try to maximize the revenue, make sure our vendor's not taking such a big chunk out of this, because it seems like there's not much at the end of the day for the city. Anyway, that's all I can say.
Okay. We, we can talk a little more about it offline, but I will say this, I think around the state, actually, the city has looked to as the, as one of the best contract negotiators on this program. People are always using our contract, because we, we've actually done the best job. And, but we'll continue to, I'd be happy to talk a little bit more about, about that with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kayla.
Just to refresh memory, the idea of this, if this is the bus issue, it really was never to be revenue generating. It was, it's simply to control the people who have been misusing and driving, you know, through one of the stop arms. If we make some, if there's some money, fine, but that really never was the purpose.
Well, that may not be the purpose, but it doesn't mean that we are missing an opportunity to generate some revenue, irrespective of whether that's the purpose or not. Spending too much on a vendor, whether that's our ultimate goal, is to alter behavior or to actually minimize taxes for our folks who live here, I think they're both important things to do, so.
Right. Nobody disagrees with that. Anything else on this? Thanks. Okay. Next. Any other questions? Okay.
We're going to move into emergency management, fire marshals.
Good evening. I'd like you to turn to page 117. We'll start with the office of the fire marshal, page 117. My name is Tom Palera. I enforce the Virginia statewide fire prevention code. It requires that certain properties and occupancies must be inspected on an annual basis. Because this is about building and life safety, the state code allows for reimbursement through fees, thereby assuring that inspections are met by not burdening the localities. The city spends many hours doing plans, review, and new developments. I'm involved in each one of these discussions with the city planner and the building official. The fire code requires that those same developments and all the other commercial establishments in the business follow the fire code and be inspected on an annual basis by the fire marshal. So, beginning in 2011, I started an assessment, when I came on board, I started an assessment of how many inspectable properties we had in the city, and I started an inspection program. I'm estimating that I'm between 75 and 85% complete, as far as accounting for all the business establishments in the community. Since 2011, when I came on board, over 1,200 violations have been corrected. The most serious of these have been dealing with fire alarm systems and fire suppression systems in buildings, which are inoperable. Today, procedures are in place so that all building engineers and their fire protection companies, contractors, communicate with me regarding the status of those buildings. Reviewing their maintenance records and test reports are part of the inspection, inspection process. Through enforcement and education, our commercial community is more aware of my expectations of them regarding building safety. And I would say that the number of fires, and more importantly, the magnitude of fire losses in the city are significantly down. In conclusion, I need help at this point to complete, to reach 100% of compliance in the city, as far as getting to all the inspectable properties on an annual basis. As we experience growth in the city, this translates into more inspectable square footage that has to be inspected on an annual basis. Next year, I already know my workload will increase with, with the opening of a hotel, the North Gate project, and the addition of the city schools from Fairfax County soil to the City of Falls Church. As the fire marshal, I'm the inspector, the plan reviewer, the fire investigator. And this only collectively accounts for half of my job duties, the other half being the emergency manager. Entertain any questions you may have.
Questions? Let's remember Tarter.
A quick question. So, you're saying you want to inspect every property once a year? Is that the kind of industry standard to do that once a year?
The fire code requires that, the state fire code requires that certain occupancies, such as all your restaurants, your daycare centers, your places of assembly, your repair facilities, your auto fuel dispensing, they must be permitted and inspected on an annual basis.
And but you're saying we're not doing that just yet?
We're not hitting that yet.
You're saying you're in the eighties, something like that?
Well, I, I feel right now, I'm estimating we're between 75 and 85% of reaching that mark.
Thank you.
Councilmember Duncan.
Thank you.
And what percentage of the properties in the city fall into those categories that have to be inspected every year?
The only buildings that do not, are, that are not required to have that inspection are what we consider B-type occupancies. Those are going to be occupancies with less than 50 people, and there's no hazardous materials being used, nor do they have a fire protection system in those properties. However, whenever there is a complaint made on those facilities by a citizen or anyone else, those have to be followed up upon.
So, you're talking, commercial operations, so older office buildings? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense of...
Any office building, most of your office buildings have fire alarm systems and suppression systems. Those are required to be inspected on an annual basis.
Okay. So, I used to have an office on Park Avenue behind, you know, within the Crabtree's operation. When I got my occupancy permit, the fire marshal had to come by and inspect. I think that was it. You know, I was there for three or four years, and I don't believe the fire marshal had to come by again. Is that, that's typical? That's correct? That's the way it should work?
That would be, previous to 2011, our services were contracted out.
Right.
And I would say that we didn't get the best bang for our buck at the time. If it had a fire protection system in it, it needed to be inspected on an annual basis. That's the only way you could assure that if you have sprinklers in the building, they're actually going to work.
But if it didn't, then it would not, kind of perversely. I mean, almost seems like it would be the opposite, but...
I, I would give you an example. At one of our shopping malls, we had a fire this past year. The sprinkler system put the fire out. However, about six months prior to that, maybe a year prior to that, when I first came on board, they were cited for multiple violations with their systems being out of service.
Okay. All right. Generally, is it your experience that the older buildings in town are more, you know, labor-intensive when you do an inspection, or the newer buildings? You know, a hotel that opens up, well, I guess we haven't had one, but when we get one, a new office building, a new mixed-use development? What's the most work?
They both are, I would say. Some of the newer buildings, we've had issues with their hood systems, where I've already had a couple of places where they opened up one year, they have a brand-new hood system, they've been certified, and the following year during my inspection, they had not kept up with compliance of that system.
Okay. I guess the, the final thought would just be that, you know, obviously, prevention and education are very important parts of what you do, and to the degree that, you know, that's an emphasis, as opposed to, you know, having to find somebody for a violation. I mean, it's great that the revenue numbers are going up, but at one level, it's not great, because it means that people are doing things that are finable, so, you know, we'd, we'd hope at some point to get to the point where people were doing enough things right that the revenue probably would go down. It's sort of like the school bus, you know, revenue. We don't want the revenue to go up. We really want it to be a safety thing.
I would make one clarification. These are not fines. These are, the, the state allows for inspections to occur with billable hours. So, a typical inspection may take a half hour, in which that would be a half hour of billable time. If that location was also required to have a permit, there's a permit, an annual permit fee associated with it too. So, these are not punitive in nature.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. They're regulatory compliance fees, I suppose. We could call it that, if you wish. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thanks. Move on. Thank you.
All right. I just would note, just one quick story, the, during the Durat Show, Tom, Tom is our emergency services coordinator, so during the Durat Show, we were up in the emergency operations center, and we turned around and we said, "Where'd Tom go? He's supposed to be here in the EOC." Well, he had left to go investigate two fires that had happened during the Durat Show. And so, he went out to do those fire investigations, and he came back and did a shift at the EOC. So, wearing a lot of hats. But one of the unmet needs that we do have in, in our list is the part-time code inspector that would report to Tom, and that, that was an unmet need that we discussed last year, and it's on the list again this year.
Emergency management.
Next is the office of emergency management. Please turn to page 110. Emergency management, we've made a lot of accomplishments over the last two years, and I would say citywide. We've conducted NIMS training for all city staff. We, we did a revision of the city emergency operations plan, and we have assigned each department and department head a responsibility with an emergency support function that is within that plan. Since my arrival in 2011, we've had an earthquake, Hurricane Irene, Tropical Storm Lee, the Durat Show, Superstorm Sandy.
And we blame it all on...
Other than that, it was very quiet.
I apologize. Not sure I'd take credit for all that stuff.
These emergencies have included two federal declarations, in which the city will be receiving almost $400,000 return in federal reimbursements from those incidents. In addition to these direct natural events, there are also the indirect events that impact the city and emergency management. After the movie theater shootings in Aurora, Colorado, last year, our department took the lead in training all city employees in active shooter scenarios at City Hall called Run, Hide, Fight. And I believe there's more information on this in a later handout you'll receive. Also, in response, the Commonwealth of Virginia, the, the response to the tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut, they will be coming out with new requirements, which will require the emergency manager and the local fire code official to be in more, to be more involved with school security and emergency planning, and also the approving of all lockdown procedures within the locality. In conclusion, like the fire marshal, the office of emergency management is a half-time position, a 50% position. With the demands of emergency management, as they increase, the office of the fire marshal suffers from that. So, I would, the importance of the part-time fire marshal serves not only in that function, but it also gives me additional capabilities in the area of emergency management. So, it feeds that one half-time position, or that one part-time, temporary part-time position will assist in two areas. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Okay. Not hearing any. Thanks.
In closing, I would just direct you to page 45, which, under 45 and the third bullet, you'll see public safety unmet needs. In those unmet needs, the justifications for those are within the budget. The first sworn officer is to address additional service needs is on page 103. It goes over what we had just spoke about in operations. The second one is a sworn police officer for SRO program. That's on page 104. The temporary part-time that Tom just explained is on page 118. The communication dispatcher is, again, it is a matter of just respectfully growing in depth, so we can get out from under some of these IG contracts and with our partners here in the, the localities. And then, on, down below, you will see an expensive polygraph examiner school, as Rick is our only polygraph examiner, and it takes three years to actually get somebody on board to do that, to be certified. We have on here a, conducting a school emergency management plan with the schools at a cost of $20,000, and then the ever-changing vehicle maintenance that we have to support our aging fleet. We've been fortunate enough in the past two years, working with Richard LaConde, in devising a plan for vehicles. We're in our first three months, I believe, of these new vehicles that have just been put out on the street. So, that is a constant cycle for us to keep the, keep the aging vehicles on the, on the street. So, we're hoping in the next fiscal year, we can buy three more and then keep our fleet up. So, that is it for us. In conclusion, I'd like to hand out the annual report for 2012. In there, you'll see many of the accomplishments of the, the whole public safety family. In addition to that, I have a gun violence prevention plan that gives you, in summary, some of the things that we are doing in totality in the community to reduce violence here in the city. I did not explain every bullet point, but I gave you some data to draw some information from, and be more than welcome to explain it in detail.
Chief, I, I would appreciate five to 10 minutes more, at least, and then the extent to which this program is linked to unmet needs that we've just talked about. Thank you.
Five minutes now. Are you...
Just...
Can I have one?
Councilmember Barry, did you want to ask a question first?
I did, actually, before we go into the... Mr. Duncan anticipated the question about animal control, and delighted to know that Officer Whitman is still, is still with us, with all her, her skills and talents. There is a, an important function that the police department plays in terms of liaison, in terms of the, of the face of Falls Church and a lot of communities. And, and I think this is a very important function. And certainly, your role in interacting with our colleagues at the Eden Center has been, at some points, controversial, but, but I think the police department has, you know, has understood the, the value of not just being in a authoritarian role, but as a, as a community service, as a, as a communicator. So, I'd like to know a little bit more about how you feel that that liaison work is going, and do you sense other emerging issues in which the police department would be well-served by having staff officers that, that are trained in either different languages or, or, or with different skill sets in order to meet sort of emerging issues?
Sure. Well, starting with the Eden Center, we have in recent, and Rick can speak to this more specifically, we've had a community outreach program with James Brooks, who's our community services officer, that has gone up and had an open house with the people up at the Eden Center. We have a, a very good relationship with the property management, Mr. Frank, that each and every time they have a special event, we're up there in great numbers to ensure that we're supporting, to include the fire marshal. And have worked with them significantly in their, in their celebrations. As of the, the gang task force issue, we did have the gang task force issue. We continue to utilize the gang task force. And there is a community up there, there's, there's two communities. The, the business people that are wanting to do all the right things and good things, and then there's an element in which they're breaking the law. And you're going to get mixed messages from, from either camp. But we are making strides in terms of having open houses. We are, we're embarking with a program with, actually, the Yellow Top Cab to ensure the drinking, the drinking issues and driving issues that we get out of that place and everywhere in the city. We're working on getting a chooser cruiser, which is a great advertisement, with Vietnamese wording on it, to get out the message. We track all our ABC violations throughout the city, and specifically there, and do talk to the, the business people specifically if we have issues. And our, I gotta say, our dispatchers do a phenomenal job, as do our midnight officers that track all of the alcohol-related issues that come out of all the businesses, but particularly at the Eden Center. So, we have had some inroads and good, good communications. There's always things that we can do better, and I look forward to any comments that you, you would have with that. As far as how it relates to unmet needs, and maybe this gun violence prevention plan, is that the cycle of hiring a police officer takes about 18 months. And it even takes longer if you cannot time it there at the academies, at the academy's dates. They have two dates in which you can enter police into the academy. We've had openings since October, and Harry left, and we lost a recruit that didn't make it out of the last cycle in the last week. Probably the worst-case scenario. You train them for 14 weeks in an academy, you put them out on the road, and they just can't cut it. And you've put a lot of money and effort and time... And you've put a lot of money and effort and time, and you, they become part of your team, but you cannot have them. That was our scenario this year. In addition to that, having seven people on light duty, which I would deem as stress-related injuries, is, it's crippling. And to have that, on top of, in the past five years, losing four administrative staff, those administrative duties don't go away. When we have somebody at the front counter, like Natasha Redman, who has been the stronghold for our, you know, face of the department, that gets sick in the last month, for a week, we have nobody to enter records, parking tickets. And we have a parking enforcement officer that's writing a lot of tickets. So we're at minimum staffing at each and every position. And on top of that, to have the administrative duties of those that have left, to have seven officers that cannot be on the street, to have three officers that were in training one which didn't make it, and to have two openings, we're pretty, we're pretty slim. And so I think the pressures of, like as Tom had said, the challenges we've had for natural disasters, for the man-made disasters at Hillwood Avenue, and/or the domino effects of Newtown, Connecticut, we need to answer to. We need to be forward-thinking, and I think we're doing the best we can with the staffing and the resources we have. It's like a force multiplier when we can put patrol into the schools, and that's what we've determined to do because that's a risk, that's our highest risk. In addition to the infrastructure of this building, that's at risk as well. If you look at a courtroom that is sometimes a council chamber, that has the front entrance with five exits and entries to it, in that little space, that's an infrastructure risk and issue. And so our priorities are people, their, their infrastructure of City Hall, and they're putting cars on the streets of the officers, that's their office essentially. Tom has spoken to his function. Tom makes this city resilient. He makes our department whole, basically because he has the ability to foresee things with the emergency management function. And because of his proactiveness with the fire marshal, as he said, even at the Eden Center, and he spoke to the Eden Center issues, he ensured they had a fire safety system, and that probably saved a good portion of that mall. And because that it's been installed with a sprinkler system. So we're doing what we have, but we are asking for, and our unmet needs on page 45, we're asking for people, we're asking for support in our vehicles, and we're asking for critical infrastructure security measures with the CIP. Does that answer your question?
Other questions? Chief, I'd like to thank you for the work that you've done in the schools. I think you've done much more than is visible to the general public, and it's very impressive from what I know of it. I guess my question is, in terms of the unmet needs on, on page 45, can you prioritize them, or, I guess my question to you is, what do you need to get the job done?
They are prioritized in the order in which we would like them. The first officer is to address just the basic service needs, like you're talking. You know, we have these needs with the Eden Center, we have these needs with the schools, we have needs on just basically filling the spots on the road. The, the next one down would be another officer that we would solely put out to the schools. And then, of course, the third priority down would be the part-time employee, which is a fire marshal, that would help with inspections and making this community resilient. And then it goes down the line. We've, we've talked about that. But I, I just would reemphasize that we need people, we need infrastructure support, and we need our, our vehicles.
I would just note one piece of history. On the, on the sworn police officer, that was a vacancy in 2010. We cut it from the budget and applied for a COPS grant to try to get it taken care of through a federal grant. We didn't get the federal grant, so we lost the position. So this really would be a restoration back to a, a prior sworn police officer level.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief or any of the presenters? I guess a generic question. I think Councilmember Barry asked a very good one with regard to Eden Center, and appreciate your sensitivity there. And I detect a positive development in terms of overall relationship. Let me go back to the issue of the sworn police officer for school resources. Now, is that separate and apart from the school resource officers we saw in one list, or is it the same? I think you had a list of unmet or wants. Is it the same?
It's the same. So what's in the notes that I sent in advance for this meeting has some of the prioritized needs.
Right.
I prejudged that the council would talk about this public safety one, so I added those to the list. The rest of them are supposed to reflect ones that were commented on earlier in the budget process. So it is there.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions? Thank you very, very much. Just pass on how much we appreciate the job that you do.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Before we do that, happy Thursday. Lead you to it.
Yes, sir. You certainly did. I didn't get a chance to speak yet, but I won't until the manager's done.
We, we've just completed the third quarter financial report, and we wanted to go through it tonight before we do the markup, as we think it will have a bearing on the markup decisions of the council. So let me ask Ms. LaConde to provide the report.
And again, happy Thursday, council. I had sent out an email to all of you with this report, so you can go over it at your leisure. Feel free to ask any questions. You can email me back if you have questions after tonight. Basically, what we're doing with the third quarter is we're focusing in on revenue, and what you will see is, based on the third quarter results, when you, we compare them year over year, I mean, there is approximately 1%, 1 and 1/2% growth over the same period last year. All right? Some significant items that we need to focus on are personal property taxes, that's a positive, it grew at 4%. B-pole grew at 4% over last year. And those numbers are reflected in your 14 budget. So wherever there was growth, we tried to make sure we closed that gap in the 14 budget. However, in our initial projections for sales taxes, we had a higher number. We've backed off of that because, as you can see, sales tax has flattened out and gone negative. We will continue to watch that. It will be particularly important in FY14. Your meals tax has also flattened out. So in our projections for 14, we've also made adjustments for that. On the expenditure side, well, first, let me stop. Do you have any questions about the revenue?
Questions? Not right now.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sure I understand everything. My fast clip.
Mm-hmm.
So you just mentioned the sales tax were down. It looks like they're actually, oh, they're just maybe down. In other words, they're actually net positive from last year, but not as much as you had hoped for in your, uh...
No. Let me go through it slow.
All right.
All right. First section, where we talk about the third quarter of 13. We are comparing budget to actual, and we are running ahead of the budget. But remember, the budget for 13 was probably based on 11 final and where we were in 12. Okay? And it was done conservatively. When you look at it year over year, we're running $125,000 behind where we were this time last year.
Is some of that related to, for example, like, well, we didn't get this month's figures in, they're two days later than they were before? In other words, like a, you know, a couple-week variance on when you receive data? Can that impact, for example, what comes from the state? Like, sales tax, I imagine, comes from the state, does it not?
Yes, sir. And, and it, and it is something that we take into consideration, but this is the third month. So when I see that, it is no longer a timing issue for me.
Gotcha.
And again, just comparing it year over year gives you an indication. The, the delay in our receipt is, doesn't vary that much from year to year. It can be a week late, I'm not, I'm not saying it wouldn't. But when you start to see declines over, over three months, that has nothing to do with timing. That's just a slowdown.
Charges for services, what does that mean exactly?
Those are the fees that we charge, like your parking wreck fees, things like that.
And why would that be down so significantly? I mean, it looks like it's down, it's a pretty good amount. Why would that be?
Well, it, it's down because, number one, we're just hitting the season where we started having the athletic programs and the camp activities.
But that's the same for the one as year over year.
Well, year over year, it's down about 5 and 1/2%. That's true.
Can't say any reason for that.
No. Not, not that I can tell you at this point in time. I mean, we continue to watch it. It may be a question of, you know, we might have had more registrants last year than we have so far this year. We don't know.
Or the book went out two weeks later or something like that? That's, I would think-
That, that could be timing.
Yeah. That's, that's sort of what I was thinking. And then investment and rent revenues, or I'm sorry, let me just see if I'm reading this right. Fines and forfeitures, what exactly are we talking about there?
That's what the police chief just went over. There's a drop in that revenue.
And that, but is that also for speeding tickets and everything combined? So anything the police would essentially charge someone with, that's a fine and forfeiture? That's the universe of thanks?
Pretty much.
And this is net revenue or gross revenue?
Gross.
This is gross. So that doesn't take out the cost of collection, just like, for example, we saw on the red lights? Looks like we lost money on the red lights. In other words, that it was actually, we, we actually put money in to service the program. I'm just curious, this is gross then, not net, correct? The fines?
Yes.
It's gross. Okay. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tarter. Any other questions at this point? Do you have anything else you want to say?
Yes, I do.
Please.
Plenty.
I hope it's all good.
Well, yes, it is. For me. All right.
By all means, continue.
On the expenditure side, what you see is some significant underspending. It's, it's 5.1 million. But what we've done is, we have gone through department by department, isolated and highlighted those areas where we see underspending. And I will tell you at this point in time that we've probably accounted for all but about $600,000. And the, one of the areas is certainly is legal. I met with the city attorney today, so we, we have an idea of, of where we're going to end up with that. But that is one of the items that's unspent. You see, that's in legislative. It's almost half a million dollars. If you go down the list, in human services, we've met with them, a lot of that underspending has to do with the billing that we've received from our partners. Those bills are coming in now, and we're looking at spending most of that money. Public safety, the main area here is the vehicles, or we haven't paid for them yet. In public works, those projects are getting underway now, so we expect to spend up most of that also. So with that, I'm finished with the quarterly report, and I will entertain any questions, should you have any.
Yes. Councilmember Kaylin.
Of the 1.1 to 1.7 million in excess revenue, could you just give us the highlights of what, what generated that excess revenue?
Personal property, B-pole, licenses and permits.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barry.
I'm sorry, I was following up on that. And that is gross and that's net revenue and it's unencumbered.
Net revenue, unencumbered. We had not budgeted. This is the amount over the budget at this point in time.
Okay.
I sort of like that answer, but let's keep going. Yes, Councilmember Kaylin.
Let me see, maybe I've misunderstood it. When we returned about $1 million in FY12, correct?
Yes.
And that meant that the revenues that we generated in FY12 were $1 million than the original projection, right? Or than the original estimation. When we did that, we didn't lower the tax rate. Tax rate remained at 127, but that year, effectively, it was 124. Then in FY13, it was 127. So the difference already would be $1 million in increased revenues because of the way the accounting took place for FY12 when compared to FY13. Where does that show up?
It would show in the real property tax line. And as you can see, that it's about where we thought it would be when we compare budget to actual.
So, but where does the million in extra revenue show up? In the, in the real, the real property, you know, the real property tax?
Well, it doesn't show up. It does not show.
This is decreased, right? By not, that number right there?
Yes. Right. I mean, the year-over-year number is going to reflect that difference, but for the current-
For the third, yeah. But the year, but the year-
The year-over-year is 463,000. So that's, that's a good portion of that.
And, but your excess, though, is, is really what you expect for the year, the 1.127.
Yes.
So that will have part of that, or a good chunk of that, would it be related to this accounting issue?
As opposed to real growth?
It's not organic growth, it's part related to the growth, to the accounting treatment that this received. It's not an expansion of economic activity.
Well, again, you're looking at the real property taxes, and you see that they're flat. Okay? Now, year over year, it's a half a million dollars difference, and maybe it should be a million dollars difference. But that has nothing to do with the excess revenue. The excess revenue, if what you're saying is true, should have been maybe a, a half a million to a million dollars higher. But the only excess revenue that we are counting for here and that we attribute the 1.12 is those items that you see that are positive for the budget to actual for the third quarter. That's the 1.1.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Barry.
So, so at the end of the day, you, I seem to recall that you said, all things being equal, you can account for about $600,000 in-
All but $600,000-
All but $600,000.
Of the underspending at this point in time.
Okay. Fine.
Again, what we did is, we took this 5.1 million, we broke it down by department. Again, what we did is we took this 5.1 million, we broke it down by department, not just function like you see here. And we've met with most of the departments, and we've discussed it. I know where they are, and we pretty much know that we're going to be in that $600,000 range. I'll go that far.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
So, just so I understand, the 600,000, that's not the legal fees that might be saved from the water litigation settlement? But this is just another pot of 600,000, and you're not sure where it actually accrued from?
Okay. In total, it's 600,000. Incorporated in that are the legal fees?
But that would explain almost all of it, wouldn't it? I thought the legal fees were budgeted to be 600,000.
Legal fees were budgeted at 600,000, you're correct. But he did spend some of it.
Gotcha. Do we know what that, do we know what that, approximately that number is?
We expect to spend at least 400 of the 600.
And, but we are, Wyatt, I don't want to get into things, maybe I shouldn't get into.
Well, I mean, I'm trying to explain to you generally. I understand, but let me, so that you're clear. All right? I am telling you that based on this underspending, that we expect that 600,000 will be unaccounted for and will represent underspending. Incorporated in that $600,000 number is about 200,000 for legal. Okay? We can talk offline if you'd like.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Well, this is where we move into more of a budget discussion. Would people like to take a five-minute break before we do that? When we do that? Thank you.
As the chair, if he wants to do that before we go into the budget discussion. He may not want to.
Wyatt, why don't I turn it over to you? And then, tonight, I think we need to get as many questions out on the table. There have been some put out before. And try to look at how we can balance things and where we can allocate, cut if possible, add where we need to. So, go ahead.
Okay. I have sent out a set of notes to try to help the council as you're working towards resolving some of the questions with this budget. A couple, one thing that I would say at the outset is that, a feature unquestionably about the budget that I have proposed to the city council is to try to strengthen the city's financial condition to be able to deal with long-range challenges. That is, in the budget, in the form of dedicated revenues for fund balance restoration, dedicated revenues for capital reserves, both of which are pursuant to council policy. But also, in light of the fact that we have a very ambitious capital improvements program. $114 million worth of school new facilities in the five-year plan, and another $20 million of general government projects in addition to that. A very ambitious capital plan. I do expect that those costs will modify and probably come down as we do more study with them. I think the sale of the water system will help with those. But nonetheless, if we're going to take the capital plan seriously, and my assumption is that all of these proposals are serious proposals, then we need a serious financial plan to accomplish them. And that is, I think, part of the discussion. I think probably three key things to accomplish long-range goals are growing the tax base, maintaining discipline over operating expenditures, and, again, setting aside funds now to meet very foreseeable costs. If we were to debt finance a loan, the school facilities, for instance, that would be conservatively estimated a 30 cent increase on the tax rate, if we could, in fact, debt finance it, which I do not believe we actually could, 100 percent debt finance it, as proposed. And therefore, we need a multi-pronged approach to try to accomplish it. With that introduction, Richard has put out some multi-year forecasts. We'd like to have that as a resource for the council as you're doing your deliberations. More immediately, we've just had a third quarter financial report. We currently estimate that we have a, that at the end of the year, after the assessment increase for real estate is factored in, we show here about a $1.1 million surplus revenue where we are at the end of the third quarter. We estimate now that that will be a $1.5 million surplus at the end of the current fiscal year from all of our regular sources of revenue. In addition, in FY13 budget, we have an appropriation for capital reserves fund balance of 1.1 million. So that generates $2.6 million of funds that we can use for those reasons that I, for those purposes that I articulated just a moment ago, if the council were to so direct. I think that, as the council is thinking, however, about taking capacity out of the tax rate for capital reserves, and for fund balance restoration, and for pay-as-you-go, all of which, right now, are built into the tax rate. If you take that out of the tax rate and fund it instead with one-time money, the FY13 surplus revenues, then you lose that capacity that we built up, I think, very painfully through the recession years, in order to try to emerge from the recession able to accomplish capital goals. The big frustration for many years in this city has been, gee, we have a great CIP. Every year, the exercise is to push projects out because we don't have the financial means to accomplish them. So that is, that's the philosophy and the council's guidance in putting together this budget when the council acted on that in November. In light of the surplus, however, I think there are some things that could be done with it, and I've laid out two, and the council may want to discuss others. One, very notably, would be to budget $900,000 of the surplus in FY13 surplus to jump-start the Stormwater Utility. And so, under this proposal, we would ask the council to establish the enterprise fund, and then fund it, pre-seed it with FY13 surplus funds, and defer the first billing for the Stormwater Fee, which I originally proposed for December, but defer that until next June. That would allow us to get underway and avoid for the residents and businesses and nonprofits in the city that December billing, and have more time to prepare for the new fee that would be administered in June. I've proposed, in addition, that the remainder of the surplus go to that greatest need in our long-range financial planning, which is our school capital requirements for new construction. And so, I've proposed to put the remainder in what we could really call a new school construction capital reserve, so we know where it's going, and we know what purpose that it would ultimately be used for. That is the extraordinary part of the CIP. The rest of it, I think, can be managed through more ordinary measures. I think that, as the council is considering the other options, which are laid out below that recommendation, council asked for options for reducing the calendar year 13 tax rate below the $1.33 rate that is in the city manager's budget. I noted the, quote, "orphans," and so it's listed here as $1.34, but while maintaining core city and educational services. And so, what we can walk through here are some of the steps of funding some of the items that were not included in the school board budget, such as FCC TV, and the use fee for the Wreckin' Parks Department for the use of school facilities. The funding for, this is on page two, for FCC TV is $178,000. So some of the options for that would be to reduce the appropriation for fund balance restoration in the FY14 budget, and put that money instead towards the Community Services Fund to fund the TV station. Another option would be to reduce the operating budgets from schools or general government to offset the increase in funding. Now, I note here that this is an ongoing expenditure, so I would not recommend that the council directly use FY13 money to meet this need, if the council were to do so, but instead, to use it to pre-fund our capital reserves, and then cut the amount in the FY14 budget for capital reserves or for fund balance restoration, which is built into the tax rate, if you're following me on that extra step that would be required. In other words, you would take that one-time money to cover a one-time expense, and then use the recurring expenditure that's built into the tax rate to fund the FCC TV. Similarly, for item three, options for dealing with the school board request for the Wreckin' Parks use of school facilities, this is a $166,650 item that the schools are budgeting as a revenue from the city, which is not actually budgeted as an expenditure on the general government side. So options here would be, again, to reduce expenditures on the operating budgets to offset an increase in expenditure, to put that money back. Or alternatively, similar to the way we would fund the FCC TV, would be to reduce the FY14 capital reserves by the same amount and apply the FY13 surplus funds to backfill behind so that we follow city council policy on funding capital reserves, but do that with one-time money instead of in the FY14 budget. The third option for the Wreckin' Parks fees, it is, I think, administratively feasible. We could raise our fees on Wreckin' Park activities to offset the cost for the use of school facilities. However, we think that this would be a big increase in fees. We think it could devastate those programs. And I think, as a matter of precedent, and as a matter of administration, it would set a bad precedent. I think it would be costly to try to have to keep track of all these charges, and I don't think it's the best use of staff time. So instead, I would propose that it be solved in a more direct way, and rather than going down this path of trying to track these costs and administer it. So those are discussion of, I think, the two most important of the unfunded items in the school board budget. The QSCAB bond funding, which I noted in my manager's message and in my initial presentation, as I've looked deeper into it, what I believe has actually occurred is that the schools did make a payment of $186,000, and that, in fact, has covered effectively three years of the QSCAB bond. And so, I think it is plausible to say that that agreement that was entered into back in 2010 has been met. And so, in any event, the QSCAB bond funding is in the budget, and that is not an unmet need. I think, at this point, I could pause to ask if there are questions about those three items.
Those three items?
Well, specifically about the funding of the orphans, and then, in addition to that, the two orphans, and in addition to that, the Stormwater item, to pre-fund it.
Could I ask an orphan question? So where do these live? If they're funded the way you propose, are they a school's function, or are they a municipal government function?
Well, I think, if I were to take the point of sensitivity from the school community, they would want us to articulate that they live in the Community Services Fund.
And so, that nomenclature becomes distinct from the schools, because previously, it's been kind of attached to them.
Correct.
But administratively, probably not. The only changes would be, hopefully, improvements in communication and coordination.
That's right. I was not aware of the heightened sensitivity on that point, and I think I've been calling it as just the school transfer amount, and as we have for years. But I think, in this environment, that has been a cause of some consternation.
If I may, the ordinance does break out the transfer into two separate parts.
That is correct.
So this would not really be a change, you know, unless we just started using, in all our summaries, you know, school operations on one line, and then community services on another. But, you know, we can have that discussion, it doesn't really matter.
Well, when you're talking about, I mean, if you're talking about revenue sharing, you know, it's a third number, in some sense. I mean, it's 46531, or whatever, instead of a clean two-way, right?
It'll become 45531.
Yeah, you get my point.
Councilmember Kayla?
I would appreciate if we talked about the bigger items first. I'd rather not spend a lot of time talking about the orphans, as they were called, whose dollar value is really quite small compared to the major issues. I have to be honest with you, I had a lot of trouble understanding this, Wyatt. This is really difficult to follow. It's not clear, you know, 13 monies are now moved to 14, and 14 monies are now disappearing. What would be the fund balance at the end of this series of maneuvers if we accepted your approach here? What is the general fund balance at the end? Does it stay at 17 percent, or is it going down?
Let me first just speak to what the basic idea is, is that you take one-time expenditures in the FY14 budget, and you fund them with FY13 surplus. That's the basic idea. You don't fund ongoing expenditures in FY14. You only fund one-time things.
Okay, how much would the fund balance?
So what those include, so to answer your question, at the, under the basic proposal that I would have, if you look on the last page, is a summary of that proposal with numbers.
Which?
I end at page four.
I end at page four, I don't have that. I don't have that.
No. I end on page four.
We all end on page four, for some reason.
Okay. So in the handout, there should be...
This is brand-new data now.
This is hard copy for tonight, but many of you didn't take it because you thought you already had it.
Oh, I did. Geez. I don't know.
This is not new information, it's just a way to present it, I think, in a way that's more clear.
I thought we had it, you know, in your email, but it wasn't there.
That's right.
So, effectively, it's new data.
There's three, do we need one more? Mr. Carter, do you, or did you catch one?
Yeah, that's there. So if you got the handout, it's there. If you're going off of what was emailed, it's not there.
Okay, what is the percentage? What will the percentage of fund balance be?
Let's look at what you're talking about. Now, I printed it from home. Okay, thanks, I'm good.
All right, let me answer Mr. Kayla's question first, and then we'll go through these numbers. In order to maintain fund balance at 17 percent, we need to make a contribution to fund balance of $1.8 million. And the reason for that is because, as the expenditures are growing, to maintain that 17 percent of expenditures, you need to increase your fund balance. So taking where we ended at FY12, to maintain policy, we need 1.8 million. All right, so now, walking through these numbers.
But you have, the use of FY13 is at 3.6 million, but that last million was due to the 6 cent tax increase.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
That's correct.
But you're, okay, so we have to have the 6 cent tax increase for these numbers to square.
Right. So this is a baseline scenario with no decrease in the tax rate.
Okay.
That's, we're on the back page.
Thank you.
So, under that scenario, the total surplus revenue in FY13 would end up at $3.6 million. It'd be the 1.5 from the revenues we just discussed in the third quarter financial report. There's an appropriation of fund balance in the budget for FY13 of 1.1 million. Every penny increase on the tax rate generates $166,000 for FY13. And so, you times that by six, and that's a million dollars. It's $998,000. So under the proposal, the baseline proposal, you would add to the FY14 budget $344,000. That was, that's for FCC TV, and that's for the school facility charge. I've left as a blank item, funding for the unmet needs. Then we would cut from the FY14 budget $200,000 for fund balance restoration, and $144,700 for capital reserves, equaling that $344,000 that was added in. You maintain the same tax rate. Then the remainder of the use of FY13 surplus revenue would be 1.8 million to maintain us at the 17 percent policy, $900,000 to pre-fund the Stormwater Utility, and $900,000 for capital reserves that I'm proposing here that we designate for schools. Now, that's for discussion, but to lay out a way forward for our greatest long-term financial planning need. So that's a summary in numbers of the baseline scenario.
Councilmember Kayla?
Regarding the, I mean, the idea of a capital fund is very intriguing, of course. The, I think it's, in terms of background, one of the things that has caused such problems is Stockton, and, there's another city right outside of Sacramento, and with Manassas Park, and I checked that out, by the way, Phil, is spending a lot of money on capital projects with expectations, with expectations that revenues were going to come in in the future. The revenues, for whatever reason, did not come in, and Stockton is now, first of all, that's in actual bankruptcy. And a good chunk of that is because it borrowed more money than it could serve. So this is very important. I don't think we should mislead ourselves. $900,000, or even if we have a couple million by the time we'd like to issue the debt, will have any particular value to investors, because the number is too small. And the idea that we would have future revenues may or may not be of interest, I don't know, but it would be demonstrably a poor financial model to borrow a lot of money because of an expectation of future revenue increases, you know, that may happen going forward. So you need to understand that that 900,000 is not necessarily going to be very meaningful.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Carter?
I just have a couple of questions. They're not so big picture, but they're still just questions I have. The FCC TV, this reminds me of SCTV, I don't know if you guys used to watch that, years back, but every time I hear that, I think of that. So, it says it costs about $180,000 to run. What portion of that's related to televising events such as city council meetings and the like, and what is the other part, and what is it exactly as far as budgeting goes? Do you know?
What this basically is, is the funding for the staff at the station. The way that the station runs is it, we get money from Verizon and Cox, and those are called peg fees, and those can be used only for equipment. And so, what the city's contribution is, through the Community Services Fund, is for the staffing. So that includes the people who filmed this meeting, upload it, and do all that type of thing. But in terms of breaking down their job descriptions to just doing these meetings, I don't have that share of what their overall job duties are. And I could get that for you.
And then, the school facility charge, I know it's been explained to me, but I'm not sure I totally understand how this is working. Is it really just accounting to say, I don't know, I see folks kind of nod their heads back there, but is it really just an accounting to say, well, we're allocating it differently than we did in the past? Is that the essence of this? It's not a new charge. It is basically reallocating...
A cost.
A cost, or an implied or inferred cost, and reallocating a different category?
That's correct.
Is that essentially what's happening?
That's essentially it. We have an MOU for the use of facilities between general government and schools. It's a very good document. It says, "We shall not charge rent." But it does say that if you have specific costs because of a function or an event that's being held, you can charge for those. And so, I do think that the school proposal is within the four corners of the MOU. I just think that, you know, I think we'd probably have to validate and vet this number of $166,000. I think we'd really have to start to keep track of a whole bunch of things. I think it might lead us down a path of wanting to charge for other things, services, you know, right. And so, do we really want to go there? Is that a good use of our time mutually? I would argue it's not. And so, what I've proposed is we kind of go back to the status quo ante, but put it in the Community Services Fund as opposed to in the school operation budget, if that's a point of sensitivity. If there is a desire for more information on this, what we could do then is take the year and study this a little bit more, and maybe group in with it, the issue of consolidation, and come back with a report. Right now, you know, this came kind of out of the blue, and I think, as a basic point, I don't think it's good policy.
So what happened in the past year is that the school, you have an activity at the school, and the school pays the cleanup people, and the trash people, and they just, they ate the cost.
That's right.
Okay, is somebody saying no? I'm getting a final no behind you.
But we provided a handout which breaks down the nature of the industry.
But you have absorbed the cost.
Essentially, what we've done, and provided a hand of this one with the yellow on it, which breaks out the history, or excuse me...
Sure.
That historically, actually, since, actually, I've been working for the school system, in terms of the actual operating costs related to, you know, we put it under generically, community use of facilities, we track Wreckin' Parks, the expenses related to Wreckin' Parks use of facilities separately from the operating budget, separately from use from renters. We set it up in a separate cost center. What you'll see on the sheet in front of you is, and may I share with you, Richard, is, in the middle section, we actually have a cost center in the Community Service Fund directly for Wreckin' Parks use of the facilities. And historically, in terms of the salaries, both wages and time cards, the benefits, and the utility, it's a percentage of the utilities, I believe 3 percent of the utilities are expensed to that cost center to capture the costs related to after-hours, weekends, summer use of the school facilities that are not related to K-12 education, and should not be reported, you know, for reporting purposes to the state as an educational expense because they're not. Therefore, we have been tracking these expenses separately over the years. In terms of covering the expenses, if you look at the top, there are two ways that those expenses were covered. One, there was a transfer from the general fund. Portion of the transfer from the general fund, the bright yellow?
Okay.
Okay. The transfer from the general fund to the Community Services Fund, a portion of that went to cover these expenses. In addition to that, there were some miscellaneous billings that were on an ad hoc basis, for example. Actually, they're all, if Wreckin' Parks used some of our buses and our drivers, that we would expense on a per-trip and a mileage basis there. But essentially, that in FY11, 12, and 13, part of the city transfer to the Community Services Fund is going to support the Wreckin' Parks use of the buildings. What the school board is proposing for next year is to not take, call it, take the transfer, include it in the transfer, but instead, to basically seek reimbursement from the city for the, these expenses, because, basically, from the entity, you know, for which the expenses are being incurred. This would be similar to our usage of the city garage, where we receive quarterly bills for gasoline and for maintenance, which are direct expenses related to the, related to school operations. The city maintains a contract with Fairfax Health Department, and we currently get two school nurses, the services of two school nurses, under that contract, and we receive a quarterly bill to reimburse the city for those expenses. And this would basically be under the same kind of a rubric, the same kind of algorithm, that we have been tracking the expenses separately for many, many years. But instead of seeking reimbursement, we just said, "I just give us the transfer," and we estimate that. And it's pretty, it's been pretty stable from one year to the next. We've seen it increase primarily, well, because of two factors. One, there has been increased usage of the facilities over time. That's kind of leveled out now. And then also, just inflation in terms of the utilities, and then salaries and benefits.
So I don't want to belabor this, but I'm not sure I understand it, to be totally honest with you, just even, I apologize. But so, have we been giving the schools money for this over the years?
Yes.
Okay, and then now, we're not going to give the schools the money, we're going to give the city the money, and the school's going to ask the city for the money?
For reimbursement.
Okay. I think I understand what you're asking. Thank you.
And the school board did lower its request in front of the Community Service Fund between this year and next year to account for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Kayla?
Just to confirm, I think I had mentioned in the QSCABs that, in the note, we were quite aware, although you didn't mention it, that the QSCAB did not have a balance sheet impact, because it was supposedly going to be paid in three installments, $186,000, but we don't have to repay the loan at the same. It's interesting, though, it does not have an impact, but it is a change in the agreement where it was promised that we would be provided $186,000, our year, for three years. So this is a unilateral adjustment of that agreement, if I'm not mistaken, that was formally agreed to by the city council.
Well, the genesis of $186,000, I'll need to go back through our records and see how we arrived at that, but...
No, that was a good offer by the school.
Okay, all right.
That was their, that was their note. It was a good faith effort to show here.
But I think that was probably on our projection as to what the debt service would be, so the actual debt service has been lower than that. And so, I think that what the commitment was, was to pay for the first three years of the debt service. And that turned out to be lower than we originally forecast. And that turned out to be lower than we originally forecast, is my read of the situation. Am I saying that correct?
How could it be lower? It's that the timing is allowed to be different because the interest is due. It couldn't have been lower.
Thank you, Oliver.
Okay, this was based on an original debt service calculation based on six million dollars. Okay, initially, it was three hundred and something thousand-
It got shrunk, that's what happened.
A year. When the actual grant was only three million, then it was cut in half. But that's what was agreed to. Okay, the one eighty-six, again, was the debt service number. The fact that we're getting a break on how we repay it doesn't change the number. You're right.
Thank you. Any other questions at this point? Councilmember Duncan?
Are we asking questions, or are we, where are you in your schedule? Are we sort of summing up? I'm just trying to get a feel for-
We have some, we have some longer-term scenarios, which the CFO has provided for us. I think he should summarize those very quickly, because we've got to get four votes in this year's budget, so.
Okay, I think maybe the things that I have to say probably would be best held until later then.
Yeah, why don't we do that? You've got five minutes, if you could, and then I'm sure there'll be a lot of follow-up on the scenarios.
This will not take five minutes. Previously, if you look at the handouts I gave you, we emailed to council the scenario three and four. And the scenario three and four mainly are different because of the CIP. If you look at scenario three, that's all school projects included in the CIP. And as you go through, and what we've done here is we haven't given you a deficit number. We're giving you a number based on the total revenue less the debt service. And then the division of that balance is what has to be allocated between the school division and general government. Okay, and as you can see, the growth patterns vary. It goes three point two one year, a negative another, three point six, and then something less than point one percent. And again, it's based on the fact that your debt service is increasing a lot faster than the revenue growth. That's scenario three. Scenario four, same theme, except that it's only those items that were in the proposed CIP. So for those of you that don't like to see big deficit numbers, what we've given you is the money that would remain that had to be reallocated or allocated between the schools and general government based on certain revenue numbers. All right, now, let's go to the real numbers, the ones I like. Scenario one, scenario one makes an assumption that most of the unmet needs in FY fourteen are included in the fifteen projected. It has a real estate tax of one point three-three. It also includes the net impact of the development projects coming online. It assumes, rather than use a percentage growth for the schools, I took what they have indicated is their goal, which is forty-six percent of revenue. As you can see, your deficits get bigger and bigger as you go out. Now, if you'll go to scenario two. Scenario two is a more conservative approach. We don't use any unmet needs. All we talk about is general government growing at the rate of five percent. And again, school divisions at forty-six percent of the total revenue. So your deficits range anywhere between one million and two point three million. Again, the purpose of the projections are not necessarily to test how accurate I am. It's just to give you an idea of what you need to do if, in fact, you had a scenario like this. So with that, I'm finished, sir, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Callan?
According to this, so at forty-six percent of revenue, it's a six percent growth in between fourteen and fifteen?
Yes.
And two, so two point seven eight? Okay, you guys are comfortable with that as a, what your growth rate's going to be? That's what you believe the growth rate will be? Okay, so we don't really know?
No, we don't. Again, the, rather than the assumptions that we've used in the past that were outdated before we even got to present them, I just used the forty-six percent number.
Okay, okay, which is, leads to modest increases in the-
Yes, it does.
In the-
Because it's based on the revenue growth.
Gotcha. But just to go back for a second, Wyatt, I remembered the second city in California, Vallejo, and it also went bankrupt for the same reason I mentioned.
All right, thanks a lot. Wyatt, can we go back to this sheet that you handed out at the beginning? And revenue in excess of budget, okay, we know what that is, thanks to the mention a minute ago. Appropriated revenue for fund balance, does that, that's what's needed to maintain the seventeen percent, right?
Yes.
And revenue from tax rate increase at one thirty-three, you've got that at one million. Why isn't it, it's three hundred thousand roughly times six, so why isn't that one point eight?
This is for the FY thirteen, and so it only gets the benefit of the tax increase for the June billing. So you take your three hundred and twenty, your normal number that you're familiar with, and you cut it in half.
Yeah, I got it. Okay. Okay, well, we had initial discussion a week or so ago. Let's get additional thoughts or comments on this, requests for information, any commentary people have. Who wants to start?
Somebody posted online today, "How have you become the face of the budget, Phil?" And I had to say, I'm not quite sure how I have become the face of the budget, but possibly it's because I'm looking for page six on your handout, which is the one that builds a budget on the current tax rate. So, you know, we'll begin, to some degree, where I ended the other night. You know, what are we about here? We're about the business of creating capacity for us to do an aggressive capital campaign. I think we all agree on that. What's the best way to do that? There, one way would have us proceed along something like the course that's laid out here. Another way would be to try to keep the tax rate as close to what it is now as possible, so as to spur, incentivize work towards economic development, one. Two, so as to literally keep money in the pockets of people who live here, spending and generating more business activity for existing businesses. And three, so as to create a kind of community unity around the notion of the capital campaign that we need to undertake. Those are kind of the three pillars of why I would like to see us not, in one fell swoop, increase taxes again by a figure that would be seven hundred and fifty dollars for the average taxpayer. Now, let me say, I welcome the fact that we put stormwater utility on the table. I think we all know that it was not ready for prime time through no one's fault. Everybody has worked like the devil on it. It's just a hard thing to do. And I think it'll definitely benefit from having more time. It does concern me that we're basically funding it to the tune of a million dollars by taking that money from surplus, money that could be deployed elsewhere, right? I mean, it's a judgment that we're making that stormwater is more important than any of the other things that are out there, including trying to restrain the rate of the tax increase. I guess those are my main high-altitude points. When we talk about fund balance, one of the online headlines that pitted Mr. Callan and I against each other inaccurately said Duncan wants to raid fund balance to, you know, build schools or whatever, which is not quite the way I had expressed it. But, you know, I understand that it's fun to create drama and conflict. The fund balance policy, as I read it, says that we are to maintain from twelve to seventeen percent. Seventeen percent is a goal. Interestingly, if you look at the fund balance policy, that's what it says. The sort of preamble to it then explains that seventeen percent is two months of operating expenditures, which is true. But the actual mission that the council is supposed to carry out is to maintain the fund balance between twelve and seventeen percent. And if we, a council chose to go below seventeen percent, to have a process over time to replenish it. To me, the way we are carrying out the fund balance policy is not in keeping with the spirit of the material that I read that's in our budget book. And I would appeal, again, on behalf of many people who are contacting all of us, saying, "On the heels of the substantial tax increases that we have borne in recent years, please give us a break from yet another substantial tax increase, which is enacted in a time unlike the others that is not a crisis. It's not an emergency." I think it becomes a very difficult thing to do, to maintain community unity around the things that we need to do if the government, basically, is pulling in more money and putting it aside for projects which are meant to benefit the very long term.
Thanks a lot. One thing I want to start, what I'm going to ask Wyatt to do is get us some numbers as I hear various things proposed. So at a one-twenty-seven tax rate, what's the revenue that's generated from that? We've got to, we've got to move to dealing with dollars and cents and the ramifications of different proposals, and I think you've got to start it on that tonight. So I think the first question that comes out of this, and maybe somebody could keep a note, data point, is what's the tax, what does that yield at one-twenty-seven?
Well, it's a reduction of two million and forty thousand, a little over two million dollars in the FY fourteen budget.
Okay, why don't we do this? Why don't, why don't we say, "Give us the numbers," and then we'll look at the numbers that we have? Do you see what I mean? I'm trying to now grapple with the ramifications of different proposals, and we'll do the same thing as we go around the table. But what's the, what's the, in other words, if we did one-twenty-seven, if we stayed at one-twenty-seven, how much money do we have to work with?
Well, it's two million less.
Two million less.
So if you're working in that direction.
I like to start from the bottom and go up, but you're starting from the one-thirty-three and going down. You get to the same place.
That's a much more complex thing to do.
You know, okay, all right.
We do try to build our budget initially from the ground up, but at this point in the process.
So the difference between a tax rate at one-twenty-seven and one-thirty-three is two million dollars?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Duncan, and then the fund balance. Trying to figure out how we phrase this. The, the, and then we're, to get at, to maintain seventeen percent, we're using how, we're using how much new revenue from FY thirteen? I'm sorry, FY fourteen?
It was two hundred thousand to be somewhere around seventeen percent, based on seventy-four million of the expenditures.
And that assumes that the one point one in FY thirteen stays for fund balance restoration.
So if, and I don't have any problem assuming a one-twenty-seven tax rate to start talking, but we have to understand what that means in terms of what we don't do. So I think that's a question we need to figure out. Councilmember Callan?
I'd like to ask Mr. Duncan to give us a number on how low he's prepared to drop the fund balance and the analytics behind, not community cohesion and vagaries like that, but what analysis have you done that the number you select would actually provide adequate protection for the city? No generalities analysis, okay? Something very specific that we can work with.
If we could, just for discussion purposes, if you could, we'll address the question to me, and then we'll just forward it out. But, okay, so you asked the question. You can answer it if you want, but it's up to you. Go ahead, if you want.
Happy to talk about that, if we want to take the time to do it. A couple of things to that. One, the data that I would need to get a feeling for what we would pick up if we reduced, if we kept the fund balance within policy, would be interesting. If the number were twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, I mean, that's a hard number that's pretty easy to know, I guess. I guess that's a question for a data point that maybe would be useful to have.
Let's get it. What would be the, if you reduce the fund balance to twelve percent, what would be the impact on the budget? And then fourteen, pick the intervals, twelve, fourteen?
Yeah, you don't need to do every interval, but, and the second observation, I guess, would be, it'd be interesting to look at other communities. I know it's hard to find any that are our size because we're so small, but we'll look at, say, Fairfax City. When they, you know, conducted their very extensive capital campaign a few years back and building new schools, I think, all the way up, what was their fund balance? And was that fund balance sufficient to give them terms in the market that were, you know, favorable or at least reasonable? Would help me understand, I think they're about twice bigger than we are, so it's not a perfect model, but, you know, it's better than Arlington or Fairfax, probably. It would help me understand, you know, is what we're asking, is what I'm asking, you know, within the ballpark? You know, and thirdly, I guess, it's, if no amount of money that we can set aside is sufficient to impress the market, then one asks, why would we set any money aside? I mean, I think you don't, you don't really mean that. I mean, even I wouldn't say that. But I think there is, you know, some reasonable amount of money that we are going to hold in our reserve fund, that we are going to go to the funders with, and we are going to lay out the other assets that we have. And, you know, materials that I've read from Moody's and our own city materials about how we represent ourselves when we go to the bond market are, you know, suggest that we talk about our economic development campaign, and we talk about our taxing capacity and our wealth and so forth. I mean, fund balances is not, and capital reserves are not the only things that raiders look at, of course, but I'm not going to go too far beyond that.
So which alternative fund balance numbers do you want us to calculate? Which, twelve percent? Would, you pick the numbers that you want.
If the range is from twelve to seventeen, yeah, I think, you know, a number of twelve, twelve, fifteen, seventeen, say. That would give you a close enough idea.
Twelve, fifteen, seventeen, okay?
And if we could look at Fairfax City, I'm sure that there's data pretty easy to grab that would show what their fund balance was when they ran their campaign and how big it was. I think it was a little over a hundred million. I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay, good. Councilmember Kalin.
If you're going to, first of all, I don't think the fund balance should be a negotiated number. It should be based on what the best practices are and what financial, people, you know, who aren't in the financial business believe is the appropriate amount. And if you want to compare, why don't you compare Manassas Park as well? Because they also had a massive debt financing and suffered a five-notch downgrade in their rating and were unable to issue debt.
Fair enough. We're all very familiar with Manassas Park. They were a big, you know, story in the Washington Post, and, you know, if we want to put that in there, that's fine, too. The one thing you see when you go to Manassas Park is that all their facilities are better than anything that we have here. And so, you know, they have not been wiped off the face of the earth, so I'm happy to have that. Another data point that would be useful, I think, as I understand it, we have a notch below AAA bond rating, which is great. Is it possible, given our size and the complexities of our situation, for us ever to do enough to get a AAA bond rating? And does that make any difference? That's something that is related to this conversation. It speaks, I guess, to, you know, just how much do we need to keep in reserve? Is there ever going to be enough to really improve our position from what it is now?
Thank you. Councilmember Kalin, do you have some data requests? I think, if I recall the last meeting, there was some discussion about reducing the schools. Do you have any comments on that? I mean, I don't mean to inappropriately tie that to you, but I thought I heard that. But do you have some, do you have some numbers to go along with some ideas in approaching the budget? Go ahead, thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity. Thanks for reminding me. We don't, you know, the city council cannot tell the schools how to allocate the money. So, what I'd just like to know is, what would it take in terms of reduction of the school request to achieve the 127?
Okay. That's fine. Do you have some data points you're interested in? Some, I think Councilmember Duncan has put some things on the table. Do you have some numbers to help us understand the impacts of various things? Do you have an approach? Okay, so you were, you're asking, then, if the tax rate were 127, how much would be fundable under the school, fundable for the schools?
How much would the school request have to go down?
Okay.
And I was thinking, in terms of the issue of rationale, the same rationale would be the one that they use in Fairfax County, which is a certain percentage was given as an increase to everybody across the board, and everybody figures out how to best use that percentage increase. I think it was 2% this year, and the schools got 2%, and that was said, you just work out what you need to do within the 2%.
Thank you. Councilmember Barry?
Yeah, I am, first of all, just fascinated that Phil Duncan is the face of the budget. I, I'd love to know, Phil, who your fan club is that's made this decision and talked them out of it.
I'm just glad it's not my face on this budget. That's all I'm.
It certainly terrified me when I read it. That's all I can say.
I would imagine so. Just some points. To me, the entire conversation of fund balance is silly. The fund balance is critical where it is. It represents 2%, 2 months of operations. To be fooling around with, is it 12, is it 15? These are, these are asking for irrelevant data points to avoid making a decision. And I'd like us to move away from that conversation. I personally think the fund balance is off the table in terms of negotiations, just done, done, and done. What is discouraging to me in this conversation is that these discussions are absolutely rife with magical, short-term thinking. We have to consider this budget, as I said last week, in a continuum. We can't be talking about doing something magical in 2014, keeping the tax rate at 127, and yet expecting a 12% growth in the school budget, and yet expecting a 3.2% growth in the city budget, and somehow magically, without touching fund balance, we're going to what? I don't know. I, I mean, the easy answer to what, how would you keep the fund, how would you keep the tax rate at 1.27 is not give the schools any money. That's how you're going to do it. Because we already figured that one out. So, I would imagine, even I would not want to be the author of that particular notion. But I just, I'm discouraged at listening to this conversation, that people are not grasping what we have seen over the last several years, which is the city's revenue streams are finite, and their appetite for what we call world-class services, whether it's schools or city services, is infinite. And if you look, if you spend a moment looking at Mr. LeConde's figures or anybody's figures, you will see that you've got this trajectory going this way in terms of expenditure, and a trajectory that's never going to meet those expenditures unless you hike up the tax rate. I mean, we've had this conversation. So, rather than asking for, in my opinion, irrelevant data points, just to avoid coming to an unpopular decision, which may or may not be raising the tax rate, what we need to do is figure out what critical city services we're wanting to fund. And I also agree with Mr. Kalin. I would suggest that one place to start is giving the schools a number that is much less than what they ask for. But not because it's, you know, not because we want to, as my son would say, hate on the schools. We don't want to hate on the schools. But, but the larger issue with the schools cannot be solved in one fiscal year. It's going, what the schools have said, as I said the other day, what the schools have done is put the cards on the table in a very dramatic way. And they have said, "This is what we need. This is what we want, and it's 12% this year, and I'll bet you a cookie it's going to be that, if not double digits in the next several years." I'm not going to dispute those numbers, but what I'm saying is what the schools have done is said, "This is, this is the cost. If you want this, this is what it's going to cost." And we want $100 million, you know, high school and all that, but that's what it costs to do the business of the schools. And until we start to, as a group, start to say, "How is this city? How are these finite revenue streams in a small city with 12,000 people? How are we going to deal with that?" Then we're just, we're just moving numbers around. So, that's, I don't have, Mr. Snyder, I don't have a data point, because I don't think I, I need any more data points. I think we've got the points we have. The only thing I would like to discuss at some point, that obviously have to be now, is that there are some expenditures on the city side that I would like to see restored in the budget. Thank you.
Could I just ask a follow-up question? Clearly, the budget that you would recommend would preserve the 17% fund balance. I think I heard that.
Yes, sir.
And there are some additional expenditures on the city side.
Yes, sir.
We should really start to talk about that as well. Which, or what expenditures on the city side do you recommend we consider additional?
I, for one, whoops, let me get it here. I, for one, I, for one, wanted to see the administrative assistant in the executive office retained, primarily because I think that there are some unmet needs in the office of the city clerk, which I think exposes us to a certain amount of vulnerability in terms of accountability with the state. And I'd like to be able to see the city clerk's office be able to comply with Virginia regs. And in order to do that, I think we need another position there. But that was, for me, that was the primary position.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tarter? Why don't I go back? Councilmember Barry, and I would ask everyone, at some point, I would urge us to get beyond concepts to, "This is the budget. This is the tax rate that we're recommending. This is what we would do with it. This is what we would allocate to the schools in the city."
Okay, I can do that.
Do you want to do that now, or you can do it in the future? It's up to you.
I could certainly, after talking to you, I could give you a note and say, "Here's the tax rate. This is what I would spend."
I think we need to, we need to get to that point, I think, for each council member. Councilmember Tarter?
Let me ask a question, if I could, to start off with. If we preserved the 127 rate, what would the surplus be? Would it be the exact same for the, you know, through the third quarter?
It would, it would be 1.1. You would not get the million.
The next go-around.
Right.
So, that number is 1.1 million? Okay. So, I tell you, to me, I've said this at earlier meetings, I think we ought to be trying harder than we are right now to keep the rate at 127. I think it's plenty high. It's way higher than our neighbors. We've got to be competitive with Arlington, Fairfax, and there's a lot of great priorities here, and there's a lot of unmet needs all over the place that are probably going to remain unmet this year. And some of those will be in the school side as well. But I think we really have, to my mind, we ought to start with, "Let's try to keep this at 127 and work around that," as opposed to, you know, keep adding this thing up and having the rates escalate. I think we really need to try to stay at 127. We've got $1.1 million in surplus, and I think we ought to be thrown in the mix here. And that's kind of where I start with on this.
So, I would ask the same thing of you, that is, at a 127 tax rate, what would you give to the schools? What would you give to the general budget? What would you do with the fund balance? Those seem to be the big three. And then, what would you do with regard to the stormwater system? So, at least on the part of everyone at their preferred rate, then that we account for all of those things. It's only that way can we, it seems to me, can we move forward.
Okay.
Councilmember?
Yeah, sure, I'll take a first cut.
Sure.
I mean, I'd like, as I mentioned before, I'd like to see some possible city cuts from what they're asking for. It doesn't mean the budget will go down this year, but it won't go up maybe three-point, whatever it's planned to go up. Maybe it'll go two-point-something, which will free up some additional funds. You have 1.1 million of surplus that I think can be put to use. Not in favor of drawing down the fund balance, at least in a significant way, whether it's a, you know, blip this way or blip that way, but in terms of drawing it down significantly, it's not something that I'm generally supportive of. How that, how all those numbers play out together, I haven't done the math. The numbers as the surplus, I think we just got tonight, unless I'm mistaken, and so I'd like to figure out the math, but the way we'd be calculated, the schools would get more than they've gotten in the past, but they wouldn't get fully caught up this year. So, that's kind of in general, kind of my thoughts. I don't have all the numbers run and how that would play out.
I think our CFO is available to help people through their options, right? So, if they call up and say, "We want to do this, 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 and this," you can help put the numbers to them, so that's a resource I think you can call on. But I do think we got to get to how much, what do we want to spend, and then how much we make, or what the revenues are.
Is council comfortable with 46% of revenue as a starting point for the school?
I mean, if I'm still on the seat here, I don't know if that's the best way to do it this year. I mean, at some point in time, I think we have to have a policy decision on what, if any, percentage we want to use in a general number for the schools. But this year, not this year, if you ask me a question, if you'd like me to finish, let me finish then.
Sorry.
I would say this year, I don't want to put a number on it, at least for me, that it has to be this percentage, or I'm seeking this percentage or that percentage. So, I guess the answer is no, if you're asking me that question.
I, but I, I would love to be able to be more specific, but, you know, there are a fair number of things that just got dropped on the lap. But, I mean, I'm a compromiser by nature. In my remarks the other night, I made it very clear that in order to achieve 127, everybody's going to have to put something in that they really would like to keep. And, you know, that goes for the schools. I mean, guys, just love you guys. I mean, there isn't anybody here who's got a deeper connection to the schools, you know, going back multiple generations. And, you know, do you think it's easy for me to suggest that, you know, we're not going to pay the teachers what the school board thinks that they need to be paid? No, it's not at all easy for me to do that. And yet, as I made clear the other night, if I ran the railroad and had all the time and resources of staff and, you know, a budget finance committee behind me, I would have come up with a budget which at least offered 127 as an option, so that we could have looked at it. Maybe we would have all looked at it and said, "Oh, my God, we can't do that." So, it's very difficult, this late in the game, to do that. And yet, it's not too late, because we owe it to the taxpayers. So, yes, I would not get the schools to 46% this year. If they're at 40 and 1/2% now, you know, one way to do it would be to try to get them to 46% in two years. Or maybe we can go 2/3 of the way this year and 1/3 of the way the next year. I mean, it's impossible to answer a question like that when, you know, it's not clear, A, how much surplus we're going to have, B, how else it's going to be used. I mean, just yesterday, we discovered that, you know, we're going to use it for the stormwater fund. Well, that's new news. I would not use as much of the surplus for the stormwater. I'm just trying to offer some guidance here. And, you know, other areas, sure. I would look at staying within our fund balance policy and see at what point along our policy line we would be able to provide enough revenue to close that $2 million gap. I mean, it sounds like a big number, but when you start talking about a surplus that's half of it, it's not that big a number. If there's a will, there is a way to do this. It's not going to give the schools everything they want, and that's very hard for me to say. But that's how important it is to me, that we not saddle the average homeowner in Falls Church with a tax bill that is $750 plus.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Barry?
I'm confused about this, because council guidance was that the city should come in at a budget that reflected natural growth, and that's what the city did. The six cents that represents the 133 was the school coming in at 12%. So, so to say, to shake the finger at the city and say, "Heavens, boys, you didn't do your job," I think, in fact, the city did its job. I think what we're wrestling with is the significant growth presented to us by the schools. Did I miss something?
Well, the, my job is to work with the council on policy, and when the council makes policy decisions, implement that policy. And so, there were some policy directions, and those two that you, you know, that was a key one that you described. The other one was, in the council budget guidance, was to fund at least $1.3 million for pay-as-you-go capital reserves, long-term types of needs. That's also in the budget. That's also now being discussed about whether we take that out, and, of course, also with the stormwater utility. So, that is, you know, we understand that we're at a point now where difficult decisions need to be made, but they, you know, what is before the council is the result of much policy discussion. It's not coming out of the blue, and now we just have to wrestle with, to get to the final decisions on it. What did I just say? This is, this is, this budget is what council asked for.
It was awesome. We're all, we're all blathering over here, and somehow, at the end of the day, we got to come up with a budget.
Councilmember Kalin?
Thank you. I agree with much of what Johanna has said regarding the long-term issues. For the record, I think stormwater is very important. I think the individuals have suffered long enough without, you know, adequate attention to the stormwaters, stormwater problems. The idea of using the $900,000 was to help the currently tax-exempt institutions have a little time to accommodate this. So, this was, to address some of your issues, Phil, I'm sorry that it didn't.
I did thank you for that part of it.
Okay. In terms of, you know, the number I gave you for, you know, 127, I, you know, I recognize that that basically, if that were the case, the schools would get no increase. And that isn't, that isn't what my intention is, but that, the comment of negotiating something, to me, is sacrosanct as the fund balance, is the same as it is to other people about the growth of the school budget. So, we are compromises, but 127 as a hard and fast number doesn't say, sound like a compromise. That seems to be an unnegotiable position. I'm willing to negotiate above 127 to some other number, if we can reach a view, make sure the schools should get some, some. sure the schools should get some increase because of the enrollment, but not if it's going to be a negotiation on fund balance. That, for me, is absolutely off the table.
I'm interested in some numbers. Let's see. The police have come forward with some requests that seem pretty good, so I'd like to get it top priority in terms of additional police officer. I'd like to see what a budget would look like if we added that, if we dealt with the cable TV, as you've suggested. The sustainability function, I don't think we need, I don't think we need $100,000 for that, but we'll see what some function there would look like. Maybe we contract for some consulting services. Whatever we do with the parks and rec and, you know, I mean, we deal with that. If we maintain the fund balance at 17%, but didn't do other fund balance stuff, in other words, we used what we have, and then if we put all that together, do we end up with 133, 134, 132, 131? Do you see where I'm going with that? It's that sort of an approach, and I would assume, under this approach, fully funding the schools, and again, it's an approach. All of us want to drive the tax rate as low as we can get it, I'm sure, but when you do that, there are certain costs to that, and the question is, what's responsible and what isn't, at least in each individual's view. So I think, so I'm looking at sort of a budget from that standpoint. And you don't need an answer tonight, but I'm interested in that sort of thing. I want to use that additional balance, but I want to use it in a way that doesn't violate the fund balance policy. So you know where I'm going. It's probably a variation of this of some kind, so be interested to see where you come out with there. Now, we all have a lot of homework to do. We need to work with the CFO to come up with some numbers, because we got to get the numbers within 10 days. We got a meeting on when? Tuesday. I'm out of town next week because of business travel, so I'd hope we'd been further along than we are in terms of getting a consensus.
I think we're coming along.
You think so?
Yeah, I think we are. I think this is a good discussion, Dave.
Well, good. Now I feel better.
But speak to the face of the budget, everybody.
So-
I thought it was, I thought it was great. Seriously, I thought you did a good job.
See, there's the face of the budget, or you just told him.
He did.
He did, yeah.
In this case, if it were my face, I don't know which would be worse, my face of the budget, so like, you know, but in any event. And other questions, since we're together and we have our staff here, any other questions they need to prepare for the next time we meet?
Just one that dawned on me, if I could. What, when we bonded for Mary Ellen Henderson, what was our financial position? You know, what was our reserve fund? What was our fund balance? You know, the only comparable that's truly comparable, because it's Falls Church, I guess.
That's a good question. We'll get information on that. We did go into that in a strong financial position, and we needed it.
Other questions or comments? So by Tuesday, well, between now and Tuesday, we need to communicate with the CFO. We need to get some numbers behind. We need to, like, what are the major components of how you would build this budget, and what are the costs, and where do you end up as a tax rate?
Yep.
And then I think that helps us move forward the decision. Do you all have any additional suggestions?
Well, one of the things that we did, I believe November 28th, is we gave you a scenario with $1.27, and it had to do with 3.2% revenue growth, and the school number was around 6% growth. So your $1.27 has already been done.
And your fund balance sliding scale was not included either.
Well, I think the fund balance was in there. The fund balance was in there.
Well, the fund balance was there, but it was a-
I don't know about the surplus.
There was no surplus, and there was not a 121517.
Let's understand something.
Slider, right?
I can make a projection about surplus, but I wouldn't advise you to put it in your 14 budget.
And your policy says you can't do that. I mean, council sets the policy, but that would be a breach of policy, of the worst kind, because you'd be taking one-time money into your operating budget, and that ends in tears. There's just no other way to say that.
But how, if I could ask, how is, how are handling the stormwater $900,000 different from taking surplus and putting it into something?
We're going to recover it.
Because you've got a plan to get the money back.
It's going to be built into the rates, and we're going to recover it.
How do you know that? How do you know that?
But also, most importantly, you will not need to put that $900,000 in again, ever. It's a one-time thing. But if you hire a teacher with that one-time money, next year, you've just got a problem.
But doesn't the $900,000 include hiring some of the nine FTEs? And those are people with benefits who continue to carry costs.
Exactly, but, you know, you're going to vote on a budget for stormwater, and whatever that number is, we're assuming that we're going to fund it. So we're going to use the $900,000 or whatever number you come up with to fund it, all right? And we're going to recover the money.
To be honest, I don't see that any different than taxing, because essentially, if you call a fee essentially a tax, you're going to recover the $900,000 through charging people in coming years or this coming year to recover that money, and it's the same thing it could be if, in fact, you-
But it won't be the same people.
This is a fundamental issue. This is like a bright line issue of funding recurring costs with one-time money. And the difference between the stormwater issue is that we have a different recurring money that's going to take care of it from that point on. It's the one time you have to put that $900,000 in. If you're going to have to put in $900,000 every year, I wouldn't recommend doing it.
What I'm trying to say is, if we've got $1.1 million of excess tax money we've taken from B-Pole people, from sales tax, from real estate tax, whatever component of taxes, and it seems like it's predominantly through taxes of various kind, we've got excess money, I understand why we can't put that to use. We can either give it back to people, in my mind, or we can put it to use. But when you budgeted in the fall, the 127 showing a 6% increase in schools, you didn't have anything in there, to my recollection, it could be standing corrected, for a surplus. Now we have $1.1 million of surplus of funds we've actually received in excess of what we planned to receive at this point in time. And so to my mind, that's totally on the table to be spent or given back to taxpayers, in a way where we are giving it back to taxpayers by giving them a lower tax rate, or the possibility of keeping the tax rate at 127 versus going to 133 by the utilization of those funds. So to my mind, I don't have an ethical issue with utilizing a surplus in funds in one way or the other. You got to do something with it. So that's my position.
And you do have to collect that $900,000, again, every year. You're going to collect it through a fee. So, and in what way is it different from a teacher's salary? In what way is the person that we're hiring to, you know, clean the lines on the stormwater with this $900,000 different from a teacher that we would hire with some portion of that $900,000? And in what way is that different?
It might be too late at night to have a clear discussion of this.
You know, it's funny, I always ask these questions too late for there to be an answer for.
Let me just give an example. The schools were using fund balance for their operations. They don't have that fund balance anymore. Four cents of the increase in the tax rate, when we calculated before, was to get them back to zero. That's what happens when you use one-time money for returning recurring expenses. It ends, and you need to raise the tax rate. So if you do it, you've kicked the can down the road for recurring costs. So our policy is, and we've held to this policy very faithfully, is that we'll use fund balance for one-time expenditures, so we don't get into that kind of trouble. And we can continue the discussion, but it's kind of, I would say, of all the city councils' adopted financial policies, that's the most important one, and the council has done a very good job of adhering to that.
Councilmember Kayla?
I don't understand, I don't want you to go over it again, Phil. It's too, it's, it's like a spaghetti bowl of thoughts to me. I can't track them down. When we gave, I'm a big opponent of rebates. When we gave back the million bucks, monies we could have used this year, would have affected the tax rate by maybe three cents just by doing that. We wouldn't be trying to get back. So we cut it, and now we're trying to cut it again, so we're paying, there's no end to this, there's no end to this constant push, it's going to, on the tax rate that's going to be going up and up because keep giving money back that we're going to need in the future years. This is what Johanna is saying. We have to look at this in a longer-term environment, not year by year.
I mean, I don't know if this is the time to go into all this or not, but you got to fight every year for the lowest tax rate you can have. You don't give up, and you say, you know what, it's easier to not cut anything, it's easier to just say, whatever you guys have asked for, that's okay, and the taxes are going to go up 10% this year, next year they'll go up 12%, 14%. At some point, you got to draw the line, you make some tough decisions. I think we should be doing that this year. And I think that everybody in this mix is going to not get what they want, and that includes the schools as well. I've got three kids in the schools, two nieces and a wife that works in the schools, but I think that everybody's got to share the pain, and I think that's what is probably going to happen this year, or I think it should happen this year. And I would love, as Phil said, to give the schools everything they want. Here's a 12% increase, a 14% increase. I don't think the city can sustain that this year. I think they have needs, and they have serious needs, that we have to meet over the longer term, over a period of several years. But this year, it's going to be real tough to do all those things. But I think we do have to draw the line and take a hard stance against increasing the taxes, and we got to fight that fight every single year. And it will be, at least as far as I'm concerned, it will be a battle every year, because we got to keep them as low as we can every year.
Thank you. Councilmember Berry?
Yep. You know, Dave, we are remarkably on the same page, except you've said it differently. I agree with you. We always want to, we want to work like hell to make the tax rate, you know, coherent and sustainable, but I guess what we're saying is that you've got to look at expenditures in a continuum. You can't just look at what the schools need this year, this year, this year. If you really want, and we'll use the schools as an example, if you really want a sustainable, coherent, functional school system, you've got to look at it over a period of years and say, how do we get with a, with a, you know, a tax rate you can deal with? How do we, how do we get from here to there? And that's what we're saying. We're not, I'm not-
What are you, then what is your plan to get there?
My plan this year is not, for instance, to go 12%, because not only do I think it's not a great idea that the city can't sustain a 12% growth rate in the schools, I really don't think, but what I want to do is dial back and say, for the next several years, unless something magical happens, the schools have put down their marker, which is, if we want to have this kind of level of service, this is what, this is what it's going to cost over the next couple of years. And so my guess is that, sitting here next year, that conversation's going to have to happen, and that tax rate's probably going to have to go up. I don't see any other way to do it.
Councilmember Kayla?
You know, I consider my fiscally conservative credentials as good as anybody's, Dave. If you have budgets that have an organic growth of 3% to 5% salaries, pension requirements, et cetera, et cetera, if you keep the tax rate the same, and you're not growing at that rate, or you want to continue to have ongoing activities, you're just going to squeeze the life out of the city. We need to have the economic development to try to do it, but we're not there yet. We're a couple of years away of getting that money. It just, the city still has to function as an ongoing entity. You just can't get an ideological number, say 127 or whatever it is, and that's it, that's all I'm going to do. It's got to be based on what the situation is, the city.
I don't understand why the city has to grow 5%, or you said 3% to 5% organic growth. We have some control over what the city budget grows at, and to me, growing at more than inflation, more than 50% of inflation, is not something that we have to just say, well, that's the way it's got to be. We have a right, and I think an obligation, to say, look, let's consider some options where that budget goes with inflation, and some tough decisions we made on the city side of things, and that's what I propose and what I've suggested in the past. You want to take that off the table and say, you know what, we are not going to consider, I'm unwilling to consider, one drop below 3-point-whatever percent on the city side of things, and I don't think that's an appropriate way to approach this budget.
Mr. Snyder, may I? Just one last thought.
You, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Duncan, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The face of the budget.
That's right, yeah. Ooh, scary. Trying to reach Mr. Kayla, where we both live, on economic development. My second greatest concern, in all of the things that I'm reading and hearing from people, after the schools, who are not happy that, you know, as the news press said, surprisingly, Phil Duncan suggested cutting the schools. But the second thing that most concerns me is what I read from people saying, you know what, why are we going to all the trouble and disruption and hassle of building all these new buildings, when you're just raising the tax rate anyway? I mean, I really do feel that we're at a critical tipping point in the psyche of the city, and you always dismiss my, you know, touchy-feely stuff, but I really do think that we are at a point where people are asking themselves, you know what, do I want to live here? A community that's, you know, building buildings, and there's a lot of disruption in traffic and construction, and there's a building looming over my nice house. Do I really want to live in a community like that? Why would I want to live in a community like that when I'm just paying year after year higher and higher taxes? I'm very concerned about that, and I fear that if we keep on this pace, that any enthusiasm, and it's hard enough to gin up, to do the economic development that we know we have to have, Ms. Berry's multi-year perspective, we know we have to have that, is going to be at risk if we are not able to show people that there is some reward to the effort that we've expended thus far, and that reward is a tax rate that is not ever higher, higher, and higher.
Thank you. Councilmember Kayla?
Okay, I mean, fine, you know, with the platitudes, I have no particular interest in raising the tax rate gratuitously either, and I would appreciate you to put words in my mouth about saying we can't look at stuff and we can't do stuff.
Well, I've made that suggestion on several occasions, and I didn't hear any of them. I actually, I believe I heard from one of the-
When I finish my comment, you can hear.
Okay.
Councilmember Kayla, go ahead.
The organic growth isn't just we're increasing expenditures, organic is expenses over which we have no control. Healthcare costs, pension requirements, the school system would like to have not 3% increase, but they want a 4% increase in order to have this year's increase in teacher contributions to be covered. These are organic, we don't have control. If you want to keep those expenses and the budget constant, something else has to go and contract. That's simple arithmetic, Dave.
At the end of the day, we do have some control. That may have to give, and there may be some other place it'll give in the other direction to make up the freight. That's the guidance we give, and we say, you know what, I know that this is a big thing this year, but you're going to have to find some savings somewhere else to match them out. It's the same thing all the people who live here do. When our taxes go up 10% or 8%, somebody finds some savings somewhere else to pay that, we need to be making the same kind of look at the city government, in my opinion. We're going to ask it of the schools. I'm sure that's going to happen with the schools in the coming days, that we're going to say, you're not going to get what you want, and you're going to take a hard look at your budget. I think we need to do the same thing on the city side of things.
Okay, so our homework is that each person puts together a budget with the critical parts, work with the CFO to get the right numbers, and we'll continue the discussion next week and see where we can get preferably seven, but at least four votes.
Yep, yep. That sounds good.
Okay. Anything else tonight?
Can we go home now?
Thank you.
Move for adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.